To our policy agenda, we're removing item 4D for the applicant's request and it will be placed back on the agenda on October 20th. On our consent agenda, we're adding 5Q resolution accepting the bid of Ronald Jefferson Savage 9 and authorizing its standard form of agreement.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I had mentioned in our opening meeting in September, that September was Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And, you know, many of us have been touched by this disease for our children. And it's not just for the event itself, but it's for a lifetime. So this is a, you know, the thoughts, the prayers, the science to child, to rid this, you know, get this disease behind us and for our future. So important. So I'm gonna read this proclamation. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children. Whereas on the average, there has been a .6% increase incidence per year since the mid 1970s, resulting in an overall incidence increase of 24% over the last 40 years. Whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. Whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer. Too many children are affected by this deadly disease. And more must be done to raise awareness and funding to find a cure. Now therefore, I Andrew Fofo Gilich, Mayor Biloxi, do hereby proclaim the September 2020 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. So keep everyone in their thoughts and prayers and encourage the effort to cure this disease. So, thank you. I think that concludes my report. Mike tells me what else.
I just wanted to remind you, Mayor, that we're now up to 61.7% responses on the census. So a little push here at the end. The census people told me, and I've just told Chief of Police, that they are starting the count of homeless people tonight and over the next few nights. So we'll capture that population.
Right. And again, I think we've been very fortunate in having the help of Keesler and all those related residents to be counted this time. And again, each one of those are valued about $2,200 annually for the next 10 years. So it's important. If you hadn't registered, please do so. It's a few minutes, nine or 10 questions, nine or 10 minutes. So we do want to encourage signup for the census. And that concludes my report.
Biloxi's sitting about right in the middle, maybe the top, maybe 60%, up the chart. Some of the counties, for example, the Heinz County is sitting at more like 80%, 80%. So we've still got a lot of ways to go. Now, Mayor mentioned Keesler. The Keesler numbers for the young airmen at Keesler and/or the numbers of anybody who wasn't on the original residence list that we turned in are not in this number. This number is only the percentage of people who got something in the mail and have responded to it.
Response. But as I mentioned, Keesler, we felt that there were about 5,000 people undercounted at Keesler. But we did make the effort to, I know with Colonel Blackwell and all there, they were at the dormitories and in Keesler housing all across. They were encouraging that. So we feel that 5,000 or so that we lost in the 2010 census will be somewhat recovered. So we're encouraged by that.
Yes, just a reminder that I've moved my Ward 5 meeting, which was originally scheduled for last week with the hurricane. I've moved that meeting to Monday, October 12th at 5:30 at the Snyder Center. Also, I just wanted to check on the wall that we resolved to have constructed in the council clerk's office. Are we making any progress on that? I think at the time, we agreed it'd be less than 500 bucks, might take four to five hours to construct. Do we have a timeline on that? Are we moving forward on that?
No progress. We haven't started.
Any idea when we might start?
No, sir.
Again, there's some ideas with regard to security on the first floor and sort of the redesign of that whole area. So we wanted to cover it. And I think Frank Ginser has been directing some of our shop drawings, so to speak, on the configuration, but I'll keep you posted on that.
Will we have it done by the end of this calendar year?
I do not know.
Let's shoot for Easter?
We'll shoot for Easter, yeah.
You think it'll be done? I mean, remember, we can't make these things happen. You guys have to make these things happen.
Again, the whole first floor needs a configuration that needs to be part of the whole outlook on things. You know, we've got some potential. And we'll update you on what we're thinking. But right now, we're just looking at the whole configuration of that first floor.
500 bucks, about, I don't know, four, five, six hours?
You know, it's not a lot of money, but it may be redone when we actually do that. So I mean, it would be a temporary solution.
All right, thank you.
Kind of share our thoughts and your input on that.
I'll check again in a few weeks. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Councilman Newman?
I just want to say thank you for taking my comments on Hiller Park Boat Launch seriously. I'm excited. Thank you.
Councilman Lawrence?
Yeah, a couple of questions, Mayor, on the Bayview Boardwalk. Did we put that off a bid yet?
Yep.
It's been bid, correct?
It's been bid.
It'll be awarded on the next council agenda.
We have the money to do that.
Yes.
It seemed to be a slow process. I was just wondering. We gotta get rid of rocks in the grass, you know?
Again, with Go Mason, you've heard the, I guess, the rhetoric about Go Mason, some of these projects, and that was funded in at the last year's Go Mason money and it's ready, it's to be bid. The drawings have been done and contractor has been awarded. Christy's here?
Christy, contract award next week, next meeting.
What was the final, what was the 2-point something? 2.1, 2.2? Yeah. Boardwalk is sort of a strange, you know, it's a reconfiguration of the rocks. Well, it's not really a boardwalk. It's all concrete. It's reconfiguring. So that's not a good description of what we're trying to do. So it's a walkway. It's a, it's pretty much of an attraction to make, to reopen the access to that. So boardwalk is sort of a bad term to use in all of these things, but you know what we're trying to do. Get rid of those rocks, have access to the water and just have a something that will protect the road and protect, you know, the ability for access to that water that we've lost when they redid the road and put all of those rocks and caused all of those things to grow up. But, you know, you can call it a boardwalk, but this is gonna be, this is gonna fix that.
Walkway doesn't matter, as long as you get rid of rocks in the grass.
That's exactly, you're right.
You know, that was the problem. And I thought we'd already had the money.
We do, for Go Mason.
We had the money, don't we?
It was republished in the report of the conference committee coming out of the legislature this year. They republished that project and named it and named the funding.
Yeah, just want to make sure that we, don't go to sleep now. We gotta get that done.
In fact, we're already drawing on that funding. Seymour Engineering designed the project and they are, we're actually already drawing on that money.
So how long does it take once they start? Is it a timeline?
Nine months, I believe. Nine months, I believe.
You want to know from the horse's mouth?
Oh, what's your bucket period? About nine months?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The horse just happened to be here.
Because everybody back there been waiting for that, you know? We've been telling them for a few years. So everybody's waiting to see it happen. I keep telling them it's gonna happen.
That project bid is at least two months ago. We had a little bit of comment. We got called a month ago. Hey, so, yeah. Like Christy just said, we recommended tally, people weren't going to play. It'll be on the next agenda.
All right. And there are a lot of events last weekend. CP Museum had their drawdown. They had that Angel Run where they helped the people that can't run. But they had no bathroom at the pavilion. I know they removed it for the Katrina, but if you rent this place, should we put up some portalets or something? They had people where they could go to the bathroom. They probably had six, seven runners down there, but they had no bathrooms. So you need to make sure the next time we do that, at least have portalets or something for that many people, you know? That's a pretty nice event, what they do. People that can't run, they push them in the carriage and that. That's where the angels, you know, come from. So it's a good thing. And I noticed on the phone and the TV, they're talking about we doing the MGM Park again. We renting it out for baseball now, for the hitting. So are they gonna turn lights on?
Well, anything that has been done, not Major League Baseball, and the lights are not supposed to be part of it. Not supposed to be on it.
It's gonna be like a hitting cage. It's gonna be hitting. It's gonna be $40 or something like that. So we gonna get a fee on that, on the $40?
You know, again, the contract.
We get a cut, we get a $1 fee for every ticket sold for any event that's there.
I need the $40 tickets.
That in golf?
For golf? That, why would I know that? Is that just something you worked out with them? Oh, okay.
The rent was $150,000. That was paid. It'll be coming up again. You know, again, those, without baseball, it put us in a difficult situation. We still pay the lights, pay the insurance, pay a lot of things. And we're working on a solution and, you know, an adjustment to what has, you know, over the last 60 months, if, what can be done in the best interest of the citizens of Biloxi, so.
It'd be a good time to rework the contract with everybody.
Yeah, just like anything else.
Yeah, it's time. Because you had no baseball team, so everything's totally different.
Call that, let me ask the lawyer. That's called force majeure? Lawyer? Okay. All right, very good.
So anyway, I just want to make sure that's something else. It's a time to step up and, I think we'd have a great contract anyway, so it's time to make it right for the city of Biloxi. And we can't keep paying all the bills and receiving no money. And that's how big it's popping right now. And whether that AA team comes back, that's questionable nowadays.
Yep.
You're liable to lose it again for next year. So, that's it. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Glavin?
Yeah, I got a few things. I just want to reiterate, I may have mentioned this in a past meeting, but the sidewalks along Tribe Drive and Pops Ferry Road, both those areas, the weeds are coming up through the cracks in the sidewalk and we need to address that or they'll start breaking up the sidewalk itself. Also, as in other meetings, I just want to give everybody an update on Real Men Wear Pink. And again, recognize a lot of people in this room are associated with people in this room, including First Lady Serena Gillich, Donna Langlinaz, Walt Rhodey, Peter Abide, Mike Leonard, I see Bones Barks in the audience today, council members Newman, Tisdale, Barrett. And if I missed anyone, I apologize, but thank you for supporting Real Men Wear Pink and what we're trying to achieve this year, especially in the midst of this COVID-19 dilemma. It really matters. Also like to recognize a few businesses. Today, Le Cafe Beignet, Cita Le Cap is donating 20% of her sales today. And I understand her business has been really brisk today. Biloxi Businessmen Club stepped up to the plate and made a donation. Peter Grant with Grant Men Wear donated this nice tie that I'm wearing today. The Pickleball Association is sponsoring a kind of fun tournament. Our representative Kevin Felscher is leading the Felscher Flounders. And I'll be leading the other team on the other side, Glavin's Gulls. And we'll have a fun little tournament to raise some money. They've already raised over $2,000 for that tournament in donations from businesses and supporting supporters of the Pickleball Association. The City of Biloxi for being a pink power sponsor, we're gonna do some illuminated bags on the steps of City Hall simultaneously with the City of Ocean Springs and the City of Gulfport, where people are recognizing their loved ones who either have succumbed or are battling breast cancer with these illuminated pink bags that they'll place along the steps of the city halls that I just mentioned. And I'd like to also ask the mayor if we could, at some point in time in October, consider if we can illuminate the Biloxi Lighthouse in pink, if that's doable. And that'll conclude my report for today.
Thank you, Councilman Glavin. Councilman Guines?
Yes. First, I want to thank the mayor and Walt for my meeting Monday. Try to go ahead and get things wrapped up in the east side of Biloxi. We addressed some issues, defencing and things like that. So I think we're on the road to getting that complete. We mentioned the census a little earlier. The Stacey Abrams group out of Atlanta is gonna donate 200 bags of groceries for Saturday. And everything is around the census awareness. We're gonna put that out on Facebook for the time and let everybody know when that's gonna take place. Anyone who come, we're gonna have pads out there so we can get people registered in. We're in the last push of census. This is very important to the community and that's how the dollars get into the community. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Guines. Councilman Barrett?
Just a couple of things. Christy, on the project on Lorraine Road, I've had several questions. Is that just sewer or is that water and sewer? And how far down does that extend?
Mr. Labata, if you would, state your name and title for the record. And if you would remain there when he's done, I've got a couple of things for you as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Christy Labata, Director of Engineering. It is just water right now. And it basically gonna go from Lorraine Road, I mean, from Wool Market Road, south on Lorraine Road to just past that trailer park. Right past Toronto's.
Almost right to Tiffany Lane area?
Right to, yes, right to Tiffany Lane. And then it's also gonna go up John Lee by the school. And the other trailer park can connect into the other end of Wool Market Road. That has water now, but it's a very small line, so we're gonna go ahead and upgrade it while we're in there.
All right. Second thing, and this is for Mike. Any update on where we're at on the parking lot for the community center? I did see that some work was being done.
I was up there last Thursday. The base is done. They're waiting to put the surface. I mean, I don't know.
So once that's done, we're in?
They stopped, completed what they were gonna do as far as the base. They're waiting on the final surface.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to cover.
Let me give you update too. I think JLC Landscaping is providing, you know, the crepe myrtles and some of the other things to go around that. So, you know, the end result is when the surfacing, the striping and the landscaping, that's when we can cut the ribbon, open it up for true.
Good deal. Third thing I wanted to cover, and I was gonna do this last week, but we had an emergency meeting because of the storm, is on the 12th, I had the opportunity, and this is my fourth year, doing the Tunnels to Tower Run. And I do a lot of runs. And this is the most fun and the most meaningful run that I'm involved in. And it's hosted in Biloxi by Margaritaville. And then one of our firefighters and his wife organizes it all, Justin Lopez and Bridget Lopez. And I didn't know this until this year, but every race that you go to is about raising money. Some of them's for a company, whatever. But for this, it goes to firefighter or first responders that are injured, that have diseases, or families who have lost first responders in the line of work. And this year, they were unable to raise as much money as far as sponsorships go because a lot of COVID, basically. And they didn't ask a lot of people because they were worried about the amount of people that would show up to the race and things like that. But one of the things that I learned is, last year, they were able to write a $40,000 check to the McKeithen family. And I know right now is not the time to do it, but once we get into the budget year, I would like to see us amend our budget and give that organization $2,500. It's for a great cause. And, you know, they reinvested $40,000 right back into, you know, one of our officers who lost his life in the line of duty here in the community. So it's not just a race. It's for a great cause. It's a great event that, and I believe Margaritaville, you know, they do a great job of hosting it. And I would like, once we get into the, into the budget year, I would like to see us amend the budget and add that in there to help that organization out. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Barrett. Mr. Labata, before we get down to business, can I address something with Councilman Glavin? When you talked about your Real Men Wear Pink fundraiser, you mentioned, I think, somebody was donating a dollar per strike for somebody in the league. Can you tell me about that?
A dollar per strike?
I'm not sure what you, you said somebody, your son or your grandson or someone?
My grandson, all of a sudden, out of the blue, he's become a pitcher. He just picked up a ball one day in practice and I'm, I said, what's he trying to do? He looks like he's trying to pitch. And I mean, the first pitch was right down the pike and in a way, he's gone. He's in his second tournament. But, so I challenged him. He said, Papa, why don't you, every strike that I throw, you donate a dollar? So that's what we're doing. Every tournament that he plays, every strike he throws, I'm logging it down. And we're donating a dollar in behalf of the Croatian kid to breast cancer.
I talked to my law firm and they authorized me to double your contribution per strike.
Oh, wow.
Give me, let me know what that comes up to and we'll get a check over there.
Okay, get that checkbook out. He's pretty good. He's getting better and better. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And Ms. Labata, first, can you give me an update on this sidewalk project on Sunkist?
You know, he's gotten behind schedule because of all this weather. And I have not touched base with him since we've had this tropical storm come through. So I will touch base with him again this week and find out where they are on that.
Okay, if you would, just give me an update on that.
I will.
Secondly, the project that we did on Rustwood?
Yes.
You know, those roads with that new process, can you give me a price for what it would cost to correct that with actual paving? I'm doing some work in finding some additional or alternate funding sources for this project to repair those roads and put them back to the way they should have been. And I'm not taking, I'm not putting blame on anybody. We agreed at this process through that contractor, we found out that that process wasn't what we, what we thought it was.
Yeah. And well, there's nothing wrong with the product as it goes on, as it is now. I mean, it's installed correctly.
And it may be, it's, the residents complained to me because it's not like the other paved roads. It's more like a country road. It's not smooth. It's just not what they bought into when they moved into that neighborhood.
Okay.
From what they tell me.
Gotcha.
And so as I represent them.
Absolutely. I'll get your price on that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That will conclude my report. We will move into the public agenda that's citizens' comments. We have 45 minutes total, three minutes per person. I'm gonna start with the left-hand side of the room or your right-hand side of the room. If there's anybody on the right-hand side of the room that would care to speak, please come to the front. State your name, sign in for me. Your name and your address.
I don't write too good, but I speak pretty good. Robert Bones Bark, I'm here on some comments. Last Thursday, we had Michael Watson come speak to the Biloxi Businessmen Club. And we had a lot of questions that we wanted to ask. And a lot of those questions, we were not able to ask. And the stuff that he did comment on, I wasn't very satisfied. You know, we talking about this tidlands. And if this is holding up these two projects, the Broadwater and the Tivoli, this is a crime. He talks about what is good for the city, for the state of Mississippi. Well, you know what's good for the state of Mississippi? Is to break ground because it's good for everybody. He talks about, and he's gotta look out for the state of Mississippi on these tidland leases, which is true. And every project is different. Well, why is every project different? Why don't you just do a 1% of the gross for everybody? Because you know why? There's no formula in place. And I told him that the buck stops with him, which it does if he can negotiate. And at one time, he said he was negotiating against himself. So if he's negotiating for the project and he can make the project go by not charging too much on this one specific issue, then make it go, make it happen. Because if these jobs were in the Delta or anywhere else in the state of Mississippi, I could give a damn what the rent was. I could care less what the state of Mississippi was getting for rent. So let's say he's getting $2 million, a million dollars. Well, somebody might say you should have got a million five. Well, you created 3,000 jobs. You created 1,500 part-time jobs. You're gonna take this east end of Biloxi that is deplorable and needs help. And when are we gonna get another billion-dollar project to come in and make this place go? Right now, in the way the economy is and the way the United States is and what's happening around the country and businesses moving out and conventions looking for places to go, we ought to be cutting the rent instead of raising the rent. We ought to be welcoming these people instead of discouraging these people. We need, you're talking about two major projects and when the economy is at a downfall. But I know what a lot of it is. Oh, there's too many casinos. Are we gonna hurt this one or hurt that one? You know what? I don't want to hear that. This is capitalism and this is people's money. And it's the only industry you ever hear about if there's too many is the casino industry. Now, us at the city council, we need to back these projects, get on board. The Biloxi Businessmen Club is not taking a position.
Well said, Mr. Bark.
So we will. But I just want to go on record, we gotta make this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Bark. Do I have anybody else on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and sign in for me.
Good afternoon. My name is Nanette Travis. Over the last 20 years or so, there has been many cases of police brutality in the Mississippi Coast. There was Marcus Malone in Jackson County, Jesse Lee Williams in Harris County or in Gulfport, I believe. And while those families received justice for their loved ones, Lee Demond Smith in Biloxi did not. Mr. Smith died while in custody in Harris County. While he did not die in Biloxi, he died in Gulfport. That's right in the back door. And we as concerned citizens want justice for his family. We're well aware of the disparities of police brutality in this country. It's even been said that there's two justice systems in this country. One for black people and one for white people. It's even been said by your great senator, late senator here, Jefferson, in 1860, while he spoke on the floor, that this government was not formed for Negroes or by Negroes, but it was formed by whites for whites. He even said that the inequality among black and whites was stamped from the beginning. Personally, I'm gonna go a little bit further. And I'm gonna say there's three justice systems in this country and in Mississippi. Black men in this country are 21 times more likely to be murdered, allegedly, but to be murdered by the police. And it doesn't take a genius to know that that's much higher in the state of Mississippi and Biloxi and Gulfport. And if we include the women who have been victims in this country and in this state, because they're underreported and they're under documented, it's even higher than that. So as citizens, we want the council to help us get justice for this young man. And we are concerned citizens about police brutality. Like I said, we're aware of the disparities in this country and even in the state of Mississippi. So we're gonna fight to get justice for this family and we urge the city council to help. So we're gonna fight to get justice for this family and we urge the city council to help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Travis. Do I have anybody else on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Again, please state your name and address for the record and sign in for me.
My name is Sabrina May. Uh, good afternoon, okay, once again, I'm here on the behalf of the gun violence in Biloxi and Ward Two. Um, as, as today, it's been a month since I requested, um, a meeting with the councilman of Ward Two. I still haven't got a date or a meeting for that. I just wanna know, you know, I wrote, got a little something to say. The gun violence in Ward Two is to the extent that is too large in comparison with the other wards in Biloxi. It's, it's, the violence in Ward Two has become a common place. Parents, parents keep their children inside for concerns of their safety. Schools can't properly educate children who experience anxiety and the businesses and residents who can leave, do leave, uh, live in with similar concerns. We want the guns out of our community and we are holding you, the city councilman, responsible for working in tantrum with the community to make that happen. After reaching out to the city council multiple times, it is my, it is in my belief that your ears are deaf to the sounding alarm, perhaps because the problem is not as serious as in wards one, three, four, five, six, and seven. Frankly, the citizens of Ward Two believe the leadership of this city does not care. The truth to be told, the city and its... Sorry, the city and its, um, um, citizens, uh, I'm sorry, leaders have been economically and socially violent towards the city of Ward Two. With the redlining and lack of investing into the community from the city, it's to be, it appears to be inedible for the violence to be, um, present here in Ward Two. But as citizens, we are working to change that. It is our expectation that you as leaders work to do, work to change it also by impelling, um, impelling it, the same practice as you use in your own communities to keep the gun violence at a minimum in Ward Two. In addition, we as the community are prepared to do what we can to make our community safer. Some ideas, gun back, gun buyback program, keeping the guns out of the city.
Ms. May, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Travis.
Okay, thank you. Oh, before I go, I will not leave this council meeting without a date set up today.
Do I have anybody else on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side that would care to speak? Again, if you would, state your name and your address for the record and sign in for me, please.
Good afternoon, Justice McCarty. Good afternoon, everybody. As a citizen of Ward Two, I would like to see more change, more structure, more planning. Some of the things that I would like to see in Ward Two as of being East Biloxi, I would like to see more grants, I would like to see more, um, outreach for the elderly. I would like to see a grocery store in Ward Two, I would like to see a lingerie mat in Ward Two. Um, we need several things, we need drug programs, drug rehabilitation programs. We need programs to teach the citizens, we have to get people clean. You understand what I'm saying, we have to get together with churches, this is all, we all have to come together as one. And it's just a bad situation, just like in John Henry Bay Park. You can't even bring your kids out there because it got so much, like I said, the police are doing, but it's not enough. You have spice that's on the rise, you understand what I'm saying? You got people sleeping all on park benches out there, walking like damn zombies. You know, who wants to bring their kids around there? Then you've got a lot of people in Ward Two that's on drugs with mental problems. So that's dangerous for the citizens of Biloxi. So it's just, it has to improve because it's not like that, just like the police presence that's in other wards, like down there, like, uh, I think that's off Fast Road, Pop's Fair, where the wealthy live at. You're not gonna go and see those things in the community because for one, the citizens aren't going for it and the police is not, or not, is, will not go for it. And it's just too much, it's like a good sign, it's like a bad sign, which I know crime is everywhere. It's just the day and age we live in, it's twenty-twenty, where East Biloxi is crying out for help. As I said in the last meeting, it's impoverished, it's drug-ridden, it's crime-infested. We need help and I don't know what else to do, we can't keep saying the same thing over again because it's becoming redundant and mundane, but we need help in Ward Two. It's just a mess, we need leadership, we need the police also. They need to come, shake hands, meet the citizens. You say you're protecting and serving, okay, meet the citizens. I'm Officer So-and-so, I'm investigator So-and-so, and you do have a couple that do that, like Officer Lee, Officer Elliot, and it's just, it's just a few, I can count them on one hand and have fingers left over. You just don't come in the community and then it's been somewhat, you understand what I'm saying? When you put on that badge, you're protecting and serving, you're not on a personal agenda, it's not about your political beliefs, you're protecting and serving. You understand, and it's just, it is, it's, it's a bad shape. We need help with the police, we need to meet the police, we need to meet the investigators, we need to see how to get grants, we need to see how to get funding, we need to see how can we do this? There's so many dilapidated buildings, it's, it's properties that are overgrown, it's just sad, it's dilapidated buildings. And my last thing, why would they put the Black Lives Matter on the street with dilapidated buildings? If they were gonna do a Black Lives, they should have put it right out here as the other cities did. Let's quit perpetrating and let's get real, city of Biloxi and everybody, thank you.
Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room, my left hand? If you would, please state your name and your address and sign in for me.
I'm Leo Carney, I'm at, uh, Keller Avenue, Biloxi, Mississippi. Just, uh, wanted to, to just give a few words of encouragement to everyone here today, and to try to bring forth some solutions to some of these problems that, that may be occurring in, in our ward here in, in Ward Two and basically, uh, along the Gulf Coast. As a, as a, as a small business owner myself, um, I wanted to see if maybe we could work together, you know, the ci, you know, small businesses and the council, if there's maybe some way that, you know, that we can make funding, you know, the access to funding available for more smaller businesses here, especially in, in, in Ward Two. And, uh, to, just to actually know, what programs out there are available to help some of these small startups? And, you know, are there any grants or, or, you know, what, or what percentage of smaller business loans can go to, to, you know, smaller businesses, especially, uh, you know, minority small businesses, uh, here in Ward Two? You know, I don't know what percentage that they, they get, but these loans that are available, they would create a strong tax base here in, in our community and it would help create businesses that'll help build more of an economic base. Also, I would like to ask the council, maybe if there could be an amendment to the budget for, for the next fiscal year budget to, to put in maybe a summer youth employment program, similar, similar to some of the ones that we see in Washington DC. I know Marion Barry's program was very, very, um, productive, uh, I think the mayor that's currently there, she, she's implementing that program right now. And, uh, it's a program that engages the youth from the ages sixteen to twenty-four years old and, and it pairs these, these children or these young adults with, uh, employers who, who are willing to participate in this program. And I don't know if there could be an incentive or some type of abatement for these, you know, these, these other, these businesses to pair with these, uh, young adults. We already have the infrastructure in place, I feel like, with, uh, some of our, some of our civic organizations like the East Biloxi Community Collaborative, United Way and others who, who I've, I've volunteered for and, and, and have done job fairs here, right here in, at the civic center in Biloxi. And so, you know, and I've also mentored some of these, some of these young youth. So I just feel like, you know, maybe the community block grant program, uh, if there's, if there's funding there that we may be, may be able to, to delve into to try to help, you know, to try to alleviate some of these problems because I, I, you know, as a resident of Ward Two all my life, you know, my father, we, we, as a bail bondsman, you know, have bonded out hundreds of these, of these youths. And so it does hit home for me and so, you know, I just wanted to, to, you know, to bring that to the, to the council and to, you know, to give everybody some words of encouragement, there, there are some things that we, that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Do I have anybody else on the right-hand side of the room, my left-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Anybody on the left-hand side of the room, my right-hand side of the room that would care to come up and speak? Anyone in the back of the room? If you would, please state your name and address for the record and sign in for me.
I'm Frederick, I'm Douglas McDonald, I'm, I was born and raised in Ward Two. Uh, my concern is just like anybody else's about the, um, the, um, concern of our youth in this community, which I am a product of this community over thirty years, but I live on the west side, but, um, I come to speak to the council members and the mayor, you guys. Um, appreciate you, um, to my friend, um, Benny that asked me to come out today. Honestly, we really need the, um, the backing of you guys because I think a lot of people don't know what comes out of Ward Two. There's a lot of doctors, lawyers, um, IT retired military that come out of Ward Two that we don't hear a lot about, but we need to put that out there as well, you know, that Ward Two was always presented as a red zone and I think that needs to be changed. I don't know if they changed that by now, but, um, concerning our youth, we need that and e- even the roads, I came down, I haven't been down here about five months and I crossed the tracks on Main going, coming south, going north. As I crossed Main and Division, boom, boom, it was a hump. I thought they fixed these roads and then the lights are still not done, like, we should stop, the traffic calm and go, it's just like a yield and go. It's like, I don't see the lines in the road, it's just, just like the tar, the pavement just been put down just to like get them out the way and that's concerning, um, fetus guys, we need to get that together, man. Um, it's just too much and Salvation Army, put the Croc Center in place, you know, I, I love it, you know? I think you need more awareness for the young people to come out. Like I say, we, we going through a lot during this pandemic, you know, um, you know, we need to do more. Uh, I'm gonna continue to come to support and give my words and try to do more, even have people to come back that has went out from Ward Two, became doctors and lawyers, bring them back to the council members and the mayor so you can see that there's some beautiful people that come out from out of Ward Two and they can, became successful, as we call it. You know, and you, I've got some people that's still here, that's still speaking and concerning about what goes on in Ward Two. And I feel like as, um, as a citizen and as a productive citizen that we need to continue to give our voice and our concerns and just do better, you know, because I think we need to come together as one unity because, you know, in different other wards, I, I don't piggyback on none of that, you know, it is what it is. But I'm just concerned about the area that I grew up in, 'cause a lot of people wanna come back and give back, but they need to see productivity in the community, you know, um, like my friend come all the way from Houston, Texas, you know, to fight and to push, you know, um, another friend of mine's coming from Louisiana, Nate. But I appreciate you, um, guys for listening, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Ms. McDonald, thank you. Do I have anybody else in the back of the room that would care to speak? If you would, sir, please state your name and address for the record and sign in for me.
My name is William Douglas III. I am also a product of Ward Two. I recently made it back from out of state to come back home, to give back because I am one of those successful people. Our praise and honor belongs to God first and foremost. But my, my main problem is, since I've been home, I see it's worse than what it was before I left. That's my issue, 'cause I work with the youth, I encourage them, help motivate them, help try to, uh, keep them from getting in so much trouble because there's nothing for them to do nowadays but get in trouble. So, you know, we need more, uh, more, we, we need the backing of the city hall to help and assist us, those of us that are willing to give back, that came back to help build up our community. 'Cause that's my job, to build up, not tear down. I was asked by the brothers and sisters who came before me to come and speak as well and I came to show my support, but I also felt that my voice is very much needed because I've been doing it, I'm forty-eight years old. I've been doing it for a long time and I'm gonna continue to do it, I'm gonna continue to come and support my brothers and sisters of Ward Two and I'm just asking that y'all also take into consideration, please, we need help. This is not in vain, this is not for show, this is serious. Thank you and have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Is there anybody else in the back of the room that would care to speak? There being none, we will move to the policy agenda. Ordinance A.
Ordinance to authorize a change in zoning from RS five high-density single-family residential to NB neighborhood business for properties on Oak Street and Fourth Street.
I'm going with First Read.
Moved by George Lawrence.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Paul Tisdale. This was the First Readings, we'll move to Ordinance B. Ms. Lucy, who was Ordinance B originally?
Barrett and Gine.
Thank you.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map change from RS ten low-density single-family residential to NB neighborhood business for property identified as one-two-six-four-eight Lorraine Road.
Thank you, Lucy. Mr. Barrett?
Uh, yes, I'd like to table this, I, um, had several calls from residents. I also talked to the, um, to Jay Lee, who's the, the one who's doing this project and I'd like to table it for two weeks until the first meeting in October.
I'll second it.
There's a motion on the table to table Ordinance B for two weeks?
And that will be, um, C as well, resolutions, 'cause they're tied together.
That would also include Resolution C as they are joining resolutions. Um, it was seconded by George Lawrence, discussion on the motion. There being none, all in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously, B and C will be tabled for two weeks.
I'm gonna read C and we need a motion and a second and I'll put that table in motion after that.
Thank you, Lucy.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a storage facility located at one-two-six-four-eight Lorraine Road.
Thank you, Lucy, and I'll renew Nathan Barrett's motion and George Lawrence's second, all in favor of the motion to continue, or motion to table? Motion carries unanimously. Resolution D.
D was removed.
Resolution E.
Resolution appointing Michael Todaro to the Biloxi Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Curtis Harrison.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Kenny Glavin, seconded by Paul Tisdale, discussion, Mr. Glavin?
I have none, I think he could be a, other than he'll be a great representative to fulfill the, the term.
Discussion, Councilman Tisdale?
Um, yeah, just a, uh, couple of things. Number one, I know Mr. Todaro, I've not known him real long, maybe twenty years. We're not terrific friends, close friends, but he's a good man and he's kind enough to speak to me on, in public on occasion. Uh, he served on the planning commission back in the eighties and nineties. Moved away from the city of Biloxi for a number of years and now is retired and has moved back. And, uh, A, he has experience, B, he's a, he's a local gentleman and C, he's a man of integrity. So I would encourage the other council members to, uh, approve this resolution and this appointment, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale, is there any other discussion on the council? Is Mr. Todaro available, does he care to speak?
I'm not gonna say how long I've known him, but since childhood, I've, I've welcomed him and, uh, and some of us hadn't grown up yet, Michael, so if you care to come up and say, I know this is gonna pass unanimously, but welcome, uh, you to, uh, the, the organization.
Thank you.
Michael Todaro.
Michael Todaro, um, thank you, Mayor, for the appointment and thank you, council, for the consideration and I look forward to serving as Biloxi continues to grow and shine in the future, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Tidaro, for being here.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'll call for the question. All in favor, signal with raise of your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously now.
All right, we'll give you your assignment.
This will bring us to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? I've got a motion by George Lawrence and a second by Paul Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence, any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, we're just, uh, talking to P Day about early about the lease on him. And I had a concern about the, the parking, but...
Yeah, the, the parking for the, uh, the old library where, uh, the Cafe Beignet is on the second floor and this business, the Jamaica Jerk, would be on the bottom floor. The lease provides on both that there's not exclusive parking for either, either tenant. And we've talked with, um, Ms. LaCap about the situation and we don't have any real objection from her. She, it's gonna be a, a good thing for her because utilities will be split.
And, uh, the elevator, how, how we're gonna elevate it completely goes to second floor that controlled by her?
It's, she still has control of that in her lease, uh, we're gonna talk about having maybe a, a window for access to the first floor for to-go orders, but I believe his main entrance will be the south side of the building.
Are they gonna have a takeout setup, anything, a drive-through or just have an option to do that?
No, no drive-through, just a, uh, a walk-up.
And this, this man is gonna repair the bottom thing, that's all part of what y'all doing with the rent?
Yes, sir.
Give him like a...
Right.
A little break for it, the 16 months?
Yes.
He has everything done in 16 months and after that goes, the rent goes to, what, $2,000, $2,500?
Well, we, we, the lease provides, we will look at it and determine what the fair, what a fair market rent will be after the 16 months.
All right, thank you.
Is, is CB here?
He is, he is here.
You wanna say something? I know you, you have your restaurant Ocean Springs and you've invited me there numerous times, this may make it a little easier for me to get to at lunch.
Thanks for having me, yes, um, what I intend to do, what I intend to do is, uh, provide a taste, a flavor that is yet to be experienced in this locality.
Thank you for coming over here. I know you, you're on Washington, how's, how's your restaurant on Washington Avenue and Ocean Springs doing?
Oh, it's, it's doing very well amidst the, the crisis from the virus, our doors have remained open and, um, we saw, we saw a small, uh, decrease in, in customers, but nothing to speak about.
Great, hopefully this works out well.
We have still been supplying, um, the areas at large and the surrounding communities with that authentic Jamaican flavor and taste that they long for, yearn for.
Does anybody have any questions for CB? Mr. Brown?
I have a question for Mr. Abide, uh, concerning the lease.
Thank you, CB, for coming today.
Thank you.
Look forward to it.
And I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, I think it's good that we're getting another business, uh, in this building, uh, but I, I'm trying to understand, as Mr. Lawrence pointed out, the, so there's some consideration for repairs and improvements on the ground floor, so, so the lease is less than it normally would be for how many months?
16 months.
For 16 months and the, the previous, uh, lease, sir, I guess, was, uh, Ms. LaCap, correct? And did she have any, uh, expenses related to the demo of the ground floor? Did she do any work there or is that just as is on the ground floor right now?
She was originally leasing the first floor and then there was a large amount of demo done, which, uh, actually made it, has made it very difficult to rent. Somebody coming in there and looking at that, at the existing situation, I mean, any restaurant or business person wanting to come in, they wanna see something's ready to go.
Oh, sure, I, I mean, I'm not disputing that, I just, I know she had some desire to develop that into a, a ongoing concern and...
Oh, she did, but we, we've gone ahead and we've had a resolution where we've released her from her obligations on that first floor. And, um, so...
So are you comfortable that that's fair and equitable?
Yeah, our challenge, we've shown it to a lot of people, we needed someone who's not only an excellent cook, but also has a degree in construction as well, so he's gonna take on all the, um, putting in the ceilings, uh, staining or redoing the floors, we gotta put in a new bathroom and, um, it's much preferable to me to do it this way than having to get, having the city do something like this, the cost probably would be double if we were gonna try to bid it out or contract it out, so I'm satisfied with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Barrett?
So after 16 months, it will be determined what the lease will be. This $2,000 is not indicative of what we will be looking at in 16 months, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilman Lawrence, did you have any other items on the consent agenda that you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, we're gonna, uh, one more, I guess Mike or maybe Christie on the P, we had additional $60,000 for the Sanger.
Yeah, just FYI on the Sanger, we, we got the paperwork approving the additional $2 million for Gulf Coast Restoration Funds and we're just waiting for the grant paperwork to show up.
So this change order is for the structural engineer to come in. Once they took the flight tower down and some of the roof off, the steel structures had to be redesigned to accommodate, um, some changes in the HVAC system. And so that was having the, the, uh, structural engineers come in and do some additional design and some construction and administration to oversee that, that we didn't know we were gonna have until we, we took the roof off and saw some of the members were not, the structural members were not, uh, usable anymore.
Yeah, I think I noticed the other day that they were lifting that, that additional framework and skeleton to, to, uh, carry the new HVAC, you know?
That's right, that's right.
That was lifted the other day.
Yeah, they had the big crane there.
So all this money's covered or they're gonna use it?
Yeah, it's all in the budget.
Can we get the new $2 million?
Yeah, no, this is not coming out of the new $2 million, this is in the budget now.
All right.
Mr. Labata, Mr. Barrett has a question for you as well?
Yes.
Uh, just on the same item, is this $60,000 coming out of the bond money?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, that's what we have now? Yes.
Mr. Labata, I failed to ask you during my consent, I mean, during my council, um, time, were you able to get someone from Seymour Engineering for my war meeting on Thursday night to talk about the underwater vegetation?
No, I was not, but I will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, he's here today, so I'll make sure I talk to him.
Okay, thanks.
I think it's on a long, uh, president.
Out of order.
So, so, Councilman, the, the deal on, on the other $2 million, um, that was, that's the MDA money coming Gulf Coast Restoration Fund, so I, we had a $2 million down payment that we made out of bond money and then they're, they're matching us with another $2 million. As soon as that, uh, grant paperwork is here and we can bring it to council, get council's approval to sign the grant agreement, hopefully we'll do that on the 6th at the next meeting. Uh, then, then the money will be available to us and the first thing we'll do is we'll award a approximately $800,000 change order that seals the exterior, uh, exterior brick. Then the residual money is, is really, um, with, with several of the small things around the outside, like the, the signage and so forth, but the rest of it will go in the inside, the inside of the theater. So we'll, we'll be awarding that, that change order as soon as the, the money is available to us for sealing the outside.
So, so you're ready to spend it as soon as it comes in, huh?
We're ready to spend it as soon as it gets here.
I know, he's always biting at the...
Spend all the money you can spend, him.
We'll spend it, you can rest assured.
I know that. And, uh, the last one I have is on, uh, O, on the adjustments, there's Peter. On the judges, what we doing here with the judges? Says something about three, you only have two, so you have to adjust them.
We're, we're adjusting their schedules and adjusting their salaries downward because, uh, for example, this, this past year, their workload was decreased and, uh, frankly, with the amount of cases that are coming through there, two full, you know, two full-time judges, it's, it's really not necessary for what we, for what we have and based on the, the situation. So, uh, their salaries are being, uh, uh, reduced, we had that as part of our budget going in to reflect that reduction and we've discussed that with them and, uh, it's a, it's an overall downward, not an upward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abide.
That's it, that's it.
Councilman Tisdale?
Uh, I just need to recuse myself on that particular item, item O. And that's it, thank you.
Councilwoman Newman? Councilman Glavine?
I have nothing.
Councilman Gines?
George answered all my questions, I have nothing.
Councilman Barrett?
Uh, I just have one other question for Christie, I'm sorry. Or, or Mike might be able to answer this, on L, is this, um, the piping that's going to close off that ditch the rest of the way to Mr., um, Roddis's driveway? So we're gonna pipe all the way to his driveway?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. Perfect.
Councilman Gines?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Christie for that, for being on top of that Ross Shrew project for me. I appreciate you taking care of that for me, thank you.
There's no more discussion on the consent agenda, I call for the question. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously, however, there are a few exceptions. I know that Councilman Tisdale is abstaining from O.
P.
I, you're, you're in opposition to B?
P.
Councilman Barrett and Councilman Deming are in opposition to P. P is in Peter, Paul. Are there any other upset, uh, um, exceptions? We'll move to code enfor, code enforcement hearings. There are no hearings. Routine agenda, do I have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Where's Mr. Walt Rhodey?
I can answer that, we got, we, we, we 60 days ahead.
You gonna say it?
We got enough money.
Again?
For, for the, uh, if you can ask him about the federal money and reimbursements, we're 60 days ahead and we got some things cooking to move forward.
What about the, did we get the 1.3? We hit, that money's in, in house?
It's in there.
You have any other money on the pipeline?
We're 60 days ahead and we're working on, on basic, the three, uh, pay apps, they've been submitted, so we're trying to make sure that we're always 60 days ahead.
Thank you.
There being no more discuss, well, is there more discussion on the routine agenda? There being none, call for the question, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to recess?
Yes, let me move that we adjourn in memory of Glendon F. Johnson. Mr. Johnson was 92 and passed away this past week. He was the principal at Jeff Davis Elementary School from its opening roughly in 1959 until, I think, 2002. He was there a long time, saw a lot of kids, uh, go through and a good fella, so I, I would, um, hope, hopefully you all will consider adjourning in his memory, thank you.
There's a, a motion to adjourn, excuse me, recess. There's adjourners for, there's a motion to adjourn in the name of Glendon F. Johnson, it's seconded by the council. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand? Everyone? Huh?
I'll second it in behalf of you all.
We always second it.